I call August, the August 21st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Glenn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Scoggan?
Here.
And Commissioner Fernandez is absent for this meeting. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, I have a request to move Resolution 2304 to the beginning of the legislative matters. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none? We'll go ahead and move that forward. Are there any? Do I have to gavel on that? Before we move any further, Rick, do you have any concerns on that? Are you okay with moving that ahead?
Absolutely, no concerns at all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, then are there any other objections to approving the agenda as we just described with the move? None? Any objections, Rick?
No, ma'am.
Okay, hearing and seeing none. The agenda is approved with the amendment? Or with the, with the, with the change? Okay. Bill Kendeck, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the minutes, the regular meeting minutes for August 7th, 2023. We have the introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters, Resolution 23-31, a conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.60, conditional uses for the operation of a marijuana retail facility known as Telkeetna Connection located at 39209 South Telkeetna Spur Road, tax ID number 24 November 04, whiskey 29 Delta 002. Within Township 24 North, Range 4 West, Section 29 Seward Meridian, public hearing September 18th, 2023. Applicant, Telkeetna Connection, Staff, Rick Benedict, Planner Number 2. Introduction for public hearing legislative matters, there's none. Community reports, there's none. Agency staff reports, there's none. And land use classifications, none. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. At this time, members of the audience may speak regarding any topic that is not on the agenda for public hearing. You have three minutes per person for any topic not scheduled for public hearing tonight, or five minutes for a community council representative. When you come up, please state your full name and spell your last name for the record. Is there anyone on the phone? If there is anyone, please press star 3. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience? Go ahead and come on up. Could you please sign in and spell your last name for us? Is there a sheet down?
Sure, I'll do that after I speak so I don't waste your time. Amber McDonough, my last name is M C D O N O U G H. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the borough making arrangements for the community councils to come in and talk about the cleanup in the borough, and I'm not sure if the planning commission was involved with that or not, but that was really helpful. And they're going to have another meeting in October. And I just really think those kind of things along with how the different agencies intertie with each other is really important. So I just want to say thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Audience participation, well first, is there any objection to closing audience participation? Okay, hearing and seeing none, audience participation is closed. Okay, we're going to move to the public hearing quasi judicial matters. We're moving to Resolution 23-33, a conditional use permit in accordance with Matsu Borough 1717, Denali State Park Land, Special Land Use District to operate a commercial use horse and wagon rides located at 10578 East Walter Harper Way, tax ID number 29 November 05, whiskey 33 Delta 012, and 29 November 05, whiskey 33 Delta 028. Within Township 29 North, Range 5 West, Section 33 Seward Meridian. Applicant, Steven Van Troba, doing business, has DNS Trail Rides, Staff, Peggy Horton, Planner 2. Hang on just a second. Okay. I'm going to read this to the planning commissioners. If there are any that, well, I'll ask each question and then you guys can answer individually per question. Number one, do it, do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financialist interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Okay. Rick, can you answer that, yes or no?
No.
Thank you. All the other commissioners have said no. Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? Okay, Rick, how about you? Thank you. Are you able to be impartial in this decision?
Yes.
All right. For the record, on the second question, all the commissioners said no, including myself. And on the third question, all agreed yes, including myself. Okay, Staff, Peggy, would you please come up?
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Peggy Horton, Planner 2 with Development Services. I'm pleased to provide an overview of the staff report for Resolution 23-33, which can be found at page 57 of your packet. Mr. Steve Van Troba of DNS Alaskan Trail Ride submitted a conditional use permit application for a commercial operation, which is horse and wagon rides within Denali State Park Special Land Use District, and is proposed to operate on a facility totaling 10 acres. During the public notice process, staff mailed out 14 notices to owners of property within a 600-foot radius of the use and to the Alaska Department of Natural Resources, Division of Parks and Outdoor Recreation. And that was on July 13th of 2023. Staff posted the application material on the borough website on June 23rd of 2023. And the Frontiersmen posted the public notice in their June 30th of 2023 issue. We also emailed the public notice and comment request to borough offices and outside agencies on June 23rd. The team did not receive any public comments. The property is outside of any community council area. So there is something I'd like to discuss. So you had a handout that was emailed to you on Thursday, and it's photographs. So what staff is recommending is a change in the resolution in front of you. It recommends eliminating condition number four on page 167 of your packet. This change is due to Mr. Van Troba's successful efforts to remove the setback violation as evidenced by these pictures that were sent out to you on Thursday. PC Resolution 23-33, listing staff recommendations and conditions of approval can be found on page 160 of your packet. We recommend approval of the conditional use permit. Once again, staff recommends condition number four on page 167 of your packet be removed as stated earlier. And the operation meets the standards of MSB 176110 and 176100. That's it? Any questions?
Are there any questions? Okay, thanks, Peggy. Okay, at this time, we'd like to open the public hearing on Resolution 23-24. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star 3. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Is there a list? Okay, thank you. This, yeah, this is quasi judicial 23-23. I'm sorry, 33. All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on it? Okay. Seeing and hearing that there are no persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Okay, then at this time, I close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, this is Alex Strawn, Planning Director. We did not give the applicant the opportunity to present his staff report. He's given 15 minutes before the public hearing.
Sorry about that. Would the applicant like to give their report?
Steve Van Troba, owner of DNS Alaskan Trail Ride. Been in business since 97 on the same property. There is a clerical error made back then when Steve Zipri did the calculations of the coordinates of the lots. And then investigation found out that I had the barn on the property line, which I removed. And everything that you guys have asked for, I've completed. And I'd just like to say you guys approve this, this permit for me, and we can carry on. It's been a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 23-24. Why is it on there? I apologize. 23-33.
I'd make a motion for 23-33.
Can we amend that motion to say 23-33 minus item number four per the request?
So, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
This is Alex Strawn, Planning Director. So you'll want to make the main motion, which is to approve 23-33. And then through another motion, you can move to amend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, Commissioner Scoggins made the motion that was seconded by Commissioner Glenn. Okay. Now, is there any discussion on the Resolution 23-33?
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to include the exclusion of item number four on page 167.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Commissioner McCabe proposed to amend. Repeat it for me, please. I'm sorry.
I make a motion to amend the motion with the exception of item number four to be excluded per the request.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner McCabe promotes, proposed an amendment to approve this with the exception of number four being excluded. It was seconded by Commissioner Glenn. Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing and seeing none? The amendment passes. Yep. Okay. All right, now we'll vote on the main motion. Is there any other discussion on the main motion? Hearing and seeing none, the motion passes.
So, Madam Chair, you want to ask for objection and see if the commissioner on the line has objection?
Okay, I'm sorry. Rick, did you have an objection on that at all?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you very much. And if you do, Rick, please speak up. Feel free to just break right in, okay?
I will certainly do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to Resolution 23-04, Resolution of Matt Newscoes, Susitna Borough, Planning Commission recommending approval of the ordinance amending Matsu Borough 17.05 essential service utilities by providing additional process and standards for approval. Staff, Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Mr. Strawn, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Matsu Borough. So this, this ordinance modifies MSB 17.05, which regulates essential service utilities. The way it's currently written, it is transmission lines over 50 kilovolts. It's pipelines, water lines, and also regulates, you know, of a certain size. And then, and then regulates the facilities that are underground. It essentially, right now, requires that if you're going to install one of these types of lines, that you go through a public process, that you hold a couple of meetings. You, you take input in, and then, and when I say you, I mean the utility companies. And then they provide a, essentially a report to the Matsu Borough that sort of summarizes the, the community process that they just held. And it's sort of automatically approved from there if they had gone through that. There's no real standards for approval. It's just a, the, the real requirement is that you have a process. And then, so there was an effort to repeal that ordinance with the stated intent that if you're not going to have standards, then why have a process at all? That failed. And then at a later date, the Assembly directed the Planning Department to write an ordinance that would require more of a public process that has standards for approval in it. And so that's what you have before you today. So a few things that this ordinance does, one is it removes, it reduces the applicability of this code to not apply to underground facilities. And so essentially, if there's going to be a gas line or a water line, those are typically going to be underground, and that would not be regulated under this chapter. It does clarify some definitions. But really, what it's applying to is, is big transmission lines for electricity. And it does require a conditional use permit process for these types of facilities. It requires, first of all, a fairly robust pre-application process where they have to go out to the community, very similar to the process that's required right now. Ideally with multiple lines that they're hoping to sort of bring before the public. And then they would sort of narrow it down to a single line that they'd bring to the Planning Commission for approval. The standards include protecting view sheds, sort of trying to mitigate the amount of trespass that happens on these lines. And it would be ultimately decided by this Planning Commission and would then go to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals if that decision were to be appealed. But it has, just like any other conditional use process, notification and public hearing, things like that. And yeah, that's, that's, in a nutshell, what is in this ordinance. Now, we did receive, as, as a handout, you have some comments. I did, I did work with the main utility companies on this. We did have some back and forth with MEA. They were, they definitely submitted some comments prior to me sort of finishing up this, this, this ordinance. But we also did receive additional comments, and there were some, are somewhat substantive last week. And so those have not been incorporated in this. So there's a couple of different ways we can go about. If, if you do want to incorporate MEA's comments into this, this legislation, then there's a couple of different ways we can go about it. We can try to tackle them tonight. I support a lot of them, and I don't support some of them. And I'd love to go into detail on every single one if you'd like to. But I have not been able to really, really analyze these in depth because they came fairly recently. The other option would be to postpone. And I can have a more, I can incorporate the ones that we support, and we can discuss the ones that we, I don't support or our department. So it's, it's up to you how you want to go about this, this evening. So with that, I'll, I'll take any questions, yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions? Commissioner Allen, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Strawn. And at this time, we'd like to open a public hearing on Resolution 23-04. Please state your full name and spell your last name for the record. And if you're on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star 3. Okay, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Ben Rayevsky, R A E V S K Y. I'm in the Fish Hook. MEA's website says that one of the great benefits of our electric co-op is that we are led by our members. From our buyer to our board directors, how we power our communities is up to us. But when we voice our opinions en masse and against what MEA wants, we're labeled as NIMBYs, which stands for not in my backyard. We are not NIMBYs. We don't care if the power lines are in our backyard. We care when it impacts our environment. And that impact removes, removes or damages the values and assets that make us who we are. We care if that damage, sorry, we care if that damages our livelihoods. We care when we are not listened to. MEA will whine that the legislation targets them. To a degree, it does target them, as MEA is the only utility in the valley that hasn't stepped into the 1990s and put their transmission infrastructure in the ground. MEA will also say this legislation is too vague. I say make it vague. If we set a percentage as to what is a substantially more costly project, then all MEA has to do is massage the numbers so the project they want to do is less expensive. And they'll wriggle out of having to listen to their members so that they claim to be led by, again. I would prefer that it comes down to the judgment officials who are appointed by the people who are elected. The Pittman project will impact more people that live, more people than what live within a mile or two of the power line, and some will lose their livelihoods, which is ironic because they won't be able to pay their electric bills. But I would prefer that those people be represented, represented and have the option to appeal to people they voted for and/or people they won't vote for in the future. We arrived at this point in time because MEA is a monopoly. They have permission from the state to be the only large-scale energy provider in the valley. This is acceptable as long as they were not behaving like a monopoly. Monopolies only look at the bottom line. But Fish Hook Pittman Tower Line sets into motion a chain of events that will injure or collapse a $31 million a year industry by disrupting the spawning and rearing of salmon in the Little Susitna, just so a monopoly could save $4 million. To put that in perspective, a negative impact of that industry of just 13% would pay the difference in the project cost between Wasilla Fish Hook and the Northern Route in the first year. But MEA won't have to pay those lost tourism dollars. Monopolies don't listen to the people they serve. In the aforementioned Fish Hook Pittman routing study, of all the hundreds of comments, only one person was against going down Wasilla Fish Hook. Over 100 comments said no to the Northern Route or requested the power lines stay on existing roads. The appeal process with MEA, you could check the box that they listened. Whoever heard of an appeal process to the company that has a vested financial interest in the outcome? When monopolies end, they're generally split up by governments or they're legislated out of existence. This legislation in front of you is the result of this monopoly not listening to its members. It's because the livelihoods of those members are threatened. It's here because the bottom line is not the end-all, be-all of any decision. And there are assets to take into consideration that are not directly affected and may not have a numerical value. We are asking you to pass this legislation as written because MEA is no longer fulfilling its role as a benevolent utility provider. its role as a benevolent utility provider, and we don't have any other recourse.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, your time is up.
We choose how to, can I just say one more sentence?
Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry, you've already gone over your time.
You can just say "no," it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
For the setup right now.
Is there anyone else on the phone? Go ahead.
Yes, this is Will, this is Will Hastings, H-A-S-T-I-N-G-S, representing the Toninian Community Council. The Toninian Community Council has publicly commented on our supportive efforts to protect or promote responsible development in the past, and we've been involved at various points in the past for issues surrounding 1705. Therefore, we support the changes and improvements to 1705 as they've been written. Responsible development to us cannot occur without transparency. Public utilities are, in one way, shape, or form, accountable to public needs and public concerns. One part of accountability is the ability to provide inputs, and the other part of accountability is addressing those inputs. And the changes in 1705 attempt to do both, so we support this direction. We do think attention should be directed to 1705.042, Paragraph A5, where it talks about 15 days' notice, public notice before the pre-application meeting. 15 days is pretty short, especially if you're trying to inform, say, a community council. It can take a while to kind of get inputs ready in that shorter period of time, so we'd like that kind of relooked at. And then, also, Paragraph, or Section 1705.048, which is Paragraph B2, which talks about adequate measures, take adequate measures to prevent trespassing. Adequate is a pretty broad word and could be very subjective, and this is probably one of those areas, and there's probably others within this, where defining, defining that so that it's more objective as to what is exactly required. That concludes our comments unless you have any questions for us.
This isn't an opportunity for us to be able to take questions, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's one more on the line, if you would like to go ahead, start now.
Hi, this is Paul Cook, C-O-O-K, with the Northern Lakes Elk Ranch, and the recent utility line process would cross about a mile and a half of our, not cross, but adjacent to a mile and a half of our property. But I just have some comments around, it is very apparent that MEA was just checking boxes, they didn't listen to comments, I don't know, you know, they were stuck away somewhere, and pretty much all along, just were going through, having meetings, and not listening. So, I welcome this proposal, I hope you really consider it and vote for it. It just puts some rights back in the people's hands, and in fact, MEA is supposed to be a co-op, but a co-op that doesn't listen to its members seems sort of silly to me. So, please vote for the amendment, a lot of work was put into it, and I think it makes a lot of common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Okay. All right, at this time, if there's anyone in the audience, well, we actually have a list we'll go with, so Bill Kendig, would you please come up? State your name, spell your last name, although I think we know it.
Hi, my name is Bill Kendig, K-E-N-D-I-G, and as you can see from some of the previous testimony, this was brought to Tim Hale to be sent to you guys because of the route that was taken in Hatchery Pass, but I can tell you, it goes through Section Line Easement. The other route down Fishhook would have involved 50-plus homes, would have added millions of dollars to the, to the cost and time, and there were a lot of objections, about 100 people, as was stated, but MEA has to look out for all 70,000 meters a member owned, and it is owned by all those members, and has to take into consideration how it will affect all those 70,000 meters. But, and, and I understand the frustration, nobody wants this kind of thing going through their backyard, but I sit in a pretty unique place. I talked with the governor about our future energy needs, we have an infrastructure bill coming for transmission lines, Golden Valley is studying 100-megawatt wind farm, 100-megawatt solar farm, there is, the governor is on biomass, and he's got investors, and geothermal is being studied all over the state, but right here in the Matsu Valley, and we need to be able to deliver that energy. I'd hate to see these transmissions lines, and they're all going to be built in the next 10 years, and they're going to take the path of least resistance. I'd hate to see the borough miss out on our future energy, which was affordable, reliable, and clean energy, and we're not going to jump to clean energy just like that, but we're slowly going to wean ourselves off with these, with these projects, and, and the people that want you to turn this into a conditional use permit just can't see that yet. It's not ready for the public, but believe me, I've been in many discussions, I'm headed down the Valdez River after this with the Alaska Power Association, this is going to be a big, a big, I think there should be some changes to Title 1705, as stated before, a longer, longer process, longer public participation, but a conditional use permit is just, I, I just don't feel, Assembly's changed, elections changed things, and I just, I just think it was a knee-jerk reaction, and I would ask you guys not to pass this at this time, or not to recommend it to the Assembly at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next person, William, is it Clatt? Come on up, please.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Will Clatt, and I'm the Capital Projects Manager at Matt Newsco Electric Association. I'm speaking on part of MEA. First, I would like to thank Planning staff for their willingness to listen to MEA's concerns regarding this amendment. MEA is an electric cooperative that is not-for-profit. Our members' interests and values are the same as yours, and our members have consistently told us that reliability and cost are their highest concerns. It is with this understanding that we are here to speak about several concerns we have with the proposed amendment to Matsu Borough 17.05. One, the language is vague in the amendment, which makes planning and executing projects difficult. Specifically, the amendment requires Type II Essential Service Utilities to minimize the visual impact without substantially increasing costs, Section 17.05.048, B1 and 3. With no defined limit on the cost to MEA members to minimize visual impacts, costs for projects could increase significantly. This also makes it difficult to determine a route or schedule for a project when there is no guidance on what specifically is required to minimize the visual impacts. In working with Planning staff, we have suggested some language to remove substantially from the amendment and insert specific language that defines the maximum cost impact that could occur when addressing visual impacts. Two, the language on public outreach, Section 17.05.042, has several items that should be addressed as well. First, it lacks consideration for different options and modern ways to communicate with stakeholders in our project development. This current amendment is limited to a traditional public outreach process where a few meetings are held and notification is done through the mail. We have recommended modifying this process. Second, there are also issues with this ordinance in regards to requesting meeting attendees' names, phone numbers, email addresses, and personal information. I would like to note, in our most recent transmission line routing project, out of roughly 8,500 potential project stakeholders, we only received one request for meeting attendees' personal information. This came from Amber McDonough, who is not an MEA member, and came, and is an Anchorage homeowner. She owns two parcels of land that are along MEA's proposed transmission route. I would also like to bring to your attention that Amber McDonough recently testified at one of MEA's board meetings that she helped develop this amendment along with Tim Hale. I would caution this commission and encourage you to question if this addendum truly addresses the community's needs. MEA understands why the Matsu Borough is looking to add additional structure to this public process. We know that it is difficult to develop requirements that will address all concerns, and appreciate the borough's efforts to do so. However, there are some significant concerns with the amendment as written, and MEA cannot support the current version. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amber McDonough?
My name is Amber McDonough.
McDonough.
I'm getting a reputation. My husband and I have worked as engineers in Alaska at commercial construction for over 50 years combined. We are pro-development, but we support Resolution 2304 to amend 1705. I speak for myself and not as a member of the Fishhook Community Council Board. This resolution's genesis was the, because of the challenges hundreds of valley residents encountered when voicing concerns about the impacts of MEA's new 20-mile Fishhook-to-Pitman power line project. Code 1705 was so dysfunctional that previous Assemblyman Jesse Sumner advocated to repeal the entire code section. Based on negative public testimony, this commission failed the repeal of 1705 ordinance unanimously, and instead recommended that standards of approval be added to guide utilities' adoption of mitigation measures. At the October Joint Planning Commission meeting, the Assembly also voted unanimously to direct staff to develop standards of approval, a permitting process for 1705. Since then, I have worked with Assemblyman Tim Hale, it's that important to me, and the Director, on ordinance 2308 to incorporate design elements to better protect private and public assets. These standards for overhead transmission lines ensure that utilities minimize their negative impacts to landowners, nearby water bodies, airfields, and excess trespassing due to the new power line corridors. This ordinance actually helps all Matsu residents because it enables a permitting process so the commission can review siting plans for overhead lines and enforce reasonable mitigation measures for location-specific sensitivities. Example, utility-caused wildfire risk to communities could also be considered. It removes the rubber-stamp project approval by the planning director that currently requires utilities only conduct extensive public outreach. This change will compel utilities' designs to reflect the actual feedback they receive from residents. It allows residents to use the Board of Adjustments and Appeals as a borough recourse to appeal decisions instead of an ineffective utility-led process. It improves utility transparency, since, as well stated, all public comments would be in the commission's public record. Previously, MEA kept residents' concerns confidential until its final decisonal document was released. This resolution also aligns with the borough's comprehensive development plan, which, quote, "is to institute appropriate land-use guidelines and regulations that reduce land-use conflicts and protect residents and businesses." I ask Commissioners to approve this resolution to ensure that future utility infrastructure projects align with the best interests of borough residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to participate? Come on up. Please state your name and spell your last name.
Yes, my name is Patricia Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R. I am speaking in favor of Resolution 23-04. As a resident of Meadow Lakes, I follow very closely the public discourse on MEA's new transmission line. It was to come, of course, the final destination of the line is in Meadow Lakes. I attended multiple meetings and represented my community council on several occasions. I applauded MEA on the outreach they performed at that time. Without the outreach, we would have not known about the project, and while the state regulates utilities, their process is to put the information on a little-known to the public website and be done with it. So, MEA's outreach was good. What was not so good was their response. We made comments, recommendations. They said they would get back to us. In many cases, they did not. One, one recommend, some recommendations did not, the recommendations did not appear to be impacting the process at all. At one point, the transmission line was proposed to come alongside Meadow Lake seniors' facility, which would have restricted the development of the housing unit, which had been part of their plan for about 15 years. I believe that this new proposed ordinance is a, a large improvement over the current one, which only requires public notice. It enables the public, the Planning Commission, to review utility plans, it continues to allow public notice by the PC, it gives the public the right to formally appeal the PC's decisions, and it improves transparency with all comments being part of the public record. I object to the comment by Mr. Kendig that this is, the borough is not ready for this change. The core area of the borough has grown so much, and we are, we are also suffering from damage, potential damage to fires. All of this needs to be considered by the PC, the Planning Commission, when they are looking at the utilities' plans. So, I recommend the approval of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, we have someone else on the phone. Go ahead.
Sorry, this is Ben Rayevsky again. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak again. If I'm not, then I won't, but...
You're not, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, yes, okay. Sorry, I just got unmuted.
All right, so is there anyone else who would like to speak? And there's no one else online? Okay. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed. Mr. Strawn, do you have any response to any of the comments that were made?
I'd be happy to answer any questions that are resulting from the comments that were made.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? All right. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-04.
I make a motion for Resolution 2304.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Glenn made a motion for Resolution 23-04, and it was seconded by Commissioner Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Scoggins.
I guess my thoughts are, I don't like to, things become too cumbersome where they can't be done, and by just keep adding layers and layers and layers where we just really can't get to where we want to be. We're asking for clean energy, and we can't get it to the houses, right? I mean, MEA's a co-op, and it's got members, and they have, they're voting members, so I really think that we don't really need to pass this resolution. I think it's a wasted time and money, and there's, there's so many layers already before we even get to it. It's, it's federal or state, multiple state layers, but let's never forget about MEA. And if MEA is not listening, then the members need to vote, there's, you know, to that board. I think they got that opportunity there, too, so, that's my comment. That's my comment.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Allen, do you have anything?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Is there any objections? Okay. We have objections, so we'll go ahead and vote. Commissioner Scoggins. Okay, so I'll have everyone vote on the clickers. And Commissioner Allen, stand by. Commissioner Allen, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Question about the voting. Point of clarification, I see we have a voting circle outside the names. I think we need to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Hey.
Yeah.
Why is mine not showing up over here? It's showing up on my button, it's a no.
It looks like it probably shifted one down.
Okay. Okay, so Commissioner Allen, just so you know, we have all no votes, and can you repeat your vote for me? I'm sorry, I got distracted.
I actually voted yes.
Okay, the motion fails. Everyone except for Allen, we're voting no. Okay, the main motion fails. I'm sorry.
So Alex Strawn, planning director. So I've said this before. I just want to reiterate here that the way this board communicates to the Assembly is through adoption of resolutions. If you fail this resolution, that's fine. But what I would ask is that you adopt something, and if you recommend that this ordinance not be passed, I would recommend, I would ask that you adopt a resolution stating that, and preferably your reasons why.
Okay, I believe we received some reasons why tonight already, and that it was pretty apparent by the vote that we are not in favor of this. So I would say that at this point, we do a resolution says that the planning commission has turned it down.
So we can work on something like that right now, if you would like? Or, I mean, by failing this, you are sending a message, but it won't be, there won't be a resolution included in the packet that goes to the Assembly.
Do we have to have a resolution that goes to them?
I don't think it's required.
Can we show what the vote was for them so that the Assembly would see?
What I can do is, I can, we can take this resolution. We can put a failed watermark on it with the vote that was represented on it, and I can include that as part of the informational memorandum. That's what I can do.
Okay.
Yeah. But I will say that what that tells the Assembly is that you didn't support that resolution. It doesn't tell them anything else.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I believe we're on to Resolution 23-20. Thank you, everyone. Okay, Resolution 23-20, Resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly adoption of the 2023 Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan update. Staff is Maya DeSalvo, Planner 2. Did I say that right?
Maya.
Maya.
Hi, I'm Maya DeSalvo. I'm a planner here at the borough. I'll give you just a second. All right. So I'm here tonight to talk about the 2023 Coordinated Human Services.
Could you bring the mic up a little closer? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Yep, no worries, I can lean right in there.
Thank you.
So I'm here tonight to talk about the Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan update. This is an update to a plan that was, the last update happened in 2018. And I guess I'll go to the next slide. So what I want to talk about tonight is what the purpose of a coordinated plan is, who the target audience is, what the processes that we went through to make this update, what our findings were, the themes, goals, and strategies that we developed throughout the planning process, and then what the next steps are going from here. So the main purpose of a coordinated plan, it's really assessing if all residents with all abilities, all ages are able to access transportation options that allow them to get to essential services, to doctor's appointments, to grocery stores, to and from jobs, anything else along those lines. So it identifies what the needs of those populations are, what our existing services here in the borough currently are, what goals and strategies we could use to improve those services going forward. And then it also ensures continued funding for the current transit operators. And I'll talk about that in another second on this slide here. So the way that the borough operates transit is a little bit different than a lot of other areas. Oftentimes, the local government is involved in transit operations or runs their own transit department. The borough does not do that. So what we have here in the borough, we have a lot of different nonprofit organizations, so a few different transit nonprofits, and then a lot of health and human service organizations, senior services, things like that, that are all coordinating and working together to get people to and from. So in order for those organizations to get funding for their operations, there does have to be a locally-developed coordinated plan in place in the region, and it does need to be updated every five years. So like I said, our last update to this plan was done in 2018. So in order for those operators to continue getting that federal funding, we do need to keep that plan updated and in place for them. So I've mentioned priority populations. So this is the definition in our coordinated plan of priority populations. So we have adults over the age of 65, youth, and it targets 10 to 17 years, individuals with disabilities, individuals living in poverty, veterans, indigenous populations, and limited English speakers. So this plan certainly has benefits to all residents. There are ways that everyone can benefit, but it really does hone in on these priority populations. And these groups are identified by the federal government as being more likely to need to rely on transit or to not have access to a vehicle to access essential services. So just a really quick snapshot, this is in the plan, but looking at the demographics of the borough here, as you can see, we have a pretty significant number of residents who fall into these different categories. There is overlap between them, right? So you may have seniors, veterans, individuals with disabilities. There may be overlap in those categories. But if we take, for example, if we look at youth and veterans who we know are not overlapping, that already makes up 46% of the population in the borough. So it's just showing that there is an underlying need for these services. The other thing I will note, in 2018, when we did the most recent update to this plan, our senior population was just over 10,000 and around 10%. So we do see those numbers increasing over time. So again, as our population grows and our population ages, it does become important to keep tabs on that. So just taking a look at the process we went through to update the plan, we started with a plan review, so looking at local, regional, and state transit and transportation plans. We, our consultant team, we conducted a series of stakeholder interviews. So again, looking at all the different organizations and entities involved in this process, and then pulling a handful of those to create our advisory committee going forward. So our advisory committee met on an ongoing basis throughout the span of this project, and they were really the drivers of creating this plan. So looking at the needs in the community, the inventory of services that we have, and then developing goals and strategies, they were leading the charge on identifying what those needs are. Again, looking at the process, when we got to the draft plan, we did a pretty robust public engagement process. We had a project website that was updated continuously. We did have a 45-day public comment period on the draft plan. We did receive about 13 comments, and that was from a mix of providers and members from the public, and those are included in your packet. We advertised in the newspaper, a few other options on there. We did reach out to every community council to offer to come and do a presentation to them if they wanted to learn more about the plan. So we did attend a meeting at the Kneek Fairview Community Council. And then in June, we received a resolution of support from the Transportation Advisory Board. So we developed overall themes. So this was through stakeholder interviews. We had an in-person work session with those, with the advisory committee, and really dug in deep on what are these themes that keep coming up. So first one, access to services. So as you all know, the borough is huge, and there are a lot of rural communities, and a lot of those communities do have individuals who fall into these priority population groups. So making sure that they have access, you know, getting to and from bus stops, things like that. Safety, so is there adequate lighting at, are there bus shelters at all? What does maintenance look like in the wintertime? All of those kind of things. Collaboration, so because there are so many different organizations that are all providing services, how can, how are they working together? There's some level of coordination that's already happening, but it is difficult for all of them to keep in contact. But they're doing the best they can. And then looking at needs. So what are the needs in the urban area versus the borough communities? The needs between providers vary. Some providers really need more resources to actually bring buses in, and others need staff and drivers. So again, those needs vary quite a bit. Education, so looking at residents throughout the borough, do they know what services are out there? Again, since we're not, it's not one entity that is operating transit, how do we bring those resources together in a way that people can find what they're looking for? Data collection, so again, recognizing that there are gaps in data or inconsistent data being collected between providers. Data is really what is driving our ability to make good, informed decisions and allocate funding. So the more data we can collect and the more consistent that is, the better going forward. Funding and resources, so funding continues to be an issue for all of these organizations, and having the resources, having the staff, having enough staff to think and plan ahead instead of only, you know, being able to run their day-to-day operations one day at a time. And then affordability of services. So looking at our priority populations, many of them need access to services, but maybe there is an income gap there. So how can we make sure that they can get to those, get to the grocery store or the gas station affordably? And there are, so there are six goals that we developed throughout the planning process. Those are in the plan, and there are a number of strategies assigned to each of those goals. I just wanted to highlight here the highest priority. So our advisory committee, after they developed goals, developed strategies, they also went through a process of prioritizing them. So the first goal, to develop a plan for communication, education, and awareness. So that top strategy is really establishing a formal marketing campaign. So how can we get information out there to residents on the services that we offer now? Strengthening and sustaining financial opportunities. So one thing I want to mention is, all of these strategies that we developed are not all the responsibility of the borough. Because there are so many organizations involved, there may be different lead agencies for different goals and strategies, but we are certainly one of those lead agencies. But just wanted to call that out. But with financial opportunities, one of these lead agencies, whether it be us, the Matzoo Health Foundation, the MPO, once it stood up, one of us could help to create a system that does identify funding opportunities to help these organizations get the funding that they need. The third goal was to establish a data collection and management plan. So again, better understanding of where are gaps in service and how can we use data to help inform future decisions. Defining and addressing regional transportation needs, develop a borough-wide transit development plan. This is something that we've already dipped our toes in a little bit, just having to help maintain funding in the urban area with our census designation. But again, trying to continue moving forward to be able to look ahead and see what the community needs. Number five, support ongoing coordination and collaboration. So again, we have all these organizations working in their own silos, and how could we help to create an advisory board or a coordinating committee that could bring them together so that they can continue working on these projects, coordinating with one another? And then designing safe, accessible, and affordable services. So just identifying infrastructure needs, so whether that be, again, bus shelters, bike racks on buses, accessible ramps, lighting, and looking again at urban and rural needs and how those needs vary. So from here, we're hoping, you know, to get a resolution of support from you guys. In September, this plan update will move forward to the Assembly. So after adoption of the plan, we would want to continue the work that all of these organizations have been doing, work on implementing strategies, identifying funding sources for them, and then, once we're moving forward, being able to measure and gather more data and report back on how these strategies have worked for our providers. That's all I've got, if you guys have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'd like to go back to one of the slides, if we can. The one that had the priorities of the strategies. You had it back up where you, one more down, that one. And you said on the slide, these were the priorities that the team had come up with out of all the strategies per each group?
Yeah, the one in italics is the highest priority strategy for that goal. So the first line is going to be the goal, the develop a plan for communication. And then the highest priority strategy, based on the provider's feedback, was to establish a formal marketing campaign. Does that make sense?
Yes.
In that executive summary, there is also a list that shows all of the strategies for each goal, if you want to reference that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, were there any other questions? Commissioner Allen, did you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on Resolution 23-20. Please state your full name, spell your last name for the record. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to the resolution, please press star three. Okay. Are there any persons in the audience that would like to speak on this? Doesn't look like it. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-20.
I make a motion for Resolution 23-20.
I'll second it. Okay, Commissioner Glenn made a motion for 23-20. Resolution was seconded by Commissioner McCabe. Okay, is there any discussion? No discussion. Okay. I do have some questions, actually, on this one because I noticed that the company that did the report was from out of state, and I was curious if it's a company that we've used previously and if there's any more information on that.
Yeah, I don't know that we've used her previously. I guess Kim can chime in. She was out of state. She was very, or is very experienced in transit-specific planning. But she did make trips out here in person and worked with our providers, and all of the goals and strategies that we developed were driven by the providers and not created by the consultant that we worked with specifically. But again, she is a transportation by the consultant that we worked with specifically. But again, she is a transportation and transit expert and helped facilitate those conversations.
Kim Solian, Planning Services Manager. We did follow the borough's procurement process, and so we put out an RFP that outlined the scope of work, and we had two firms apply to help us with the coordinated plan. And then we went through a borough organized scoring process where there was independent reviewers from the department, and the firm that we chose was the highest-scoring firm that met the budget requirements of the project.
Okay. Thank you for that. Go ahead, Commissioner McCabe. What are the differences between the plan from the prior five years to this current one?
I guess the main updates are really reassessing what our demographics are. You know, our population has grown a lot in the last five to eight years. So assessing that, really making sure that we're looking at how our providers are able to provide services, what their resources are. Yeah, we're just growing and changing, so we want to make sure that we're looking at our goals and our strategies and that they are up to date and in line with what we need.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So a lot of this sounds like it's run on grants, and I'm wondering what the strings are, because it seems like every time we deal with the federal government, we've got all kinds of strings that bind us.
Yeah, so the borough, in this case, is not actually applying for any grant funding ourselves, but all of the nonprofits do on their own. So in order for them to be able to apply for that funding, they have to be pulling projects from a coordinated plan that's locally developed and is updated every five years. So we are helping as a lead agency to facilitate the plan update and have that plan in place, so that when those organizations apply for grant funding on their own, they're able to do that, if that makes sense. So this is not funding that we're applying for. We are just helping provide the plan, making sure it is in line with the needs of the providers and that they're able to get funding for their projects on their own.
So none of this is sustainable. It has to operate on taxpayer money. None of it can operate without the taxpayers. There's no way that, these riders aren't paying for the rides, or there's no, I mean, like, this is all subsidized by the taxpayers, the whole system?
So, Kim Solian, Planning Services Manager. So it's hard for us to speak in detail about how, there's about 15 different providers that are providing rides across the borough in addition to private taxi cab services. Some of the riders are able to pay out of their own pocket for their ride. Other riders are probably using Medicaid and Medicare billing. Other providers, maybe their health insurance is paying for the ride, and then I think some of the rides are probably subsidized by grant funds. But that's kind of in details that we, as the Matsu Borough, working on this plan, didn't get into the weeds on ridership and costs and payment. So I think it's a mix of individual funds, Medicaid, Medicare, insurance billing, as well as grant subsidized funds. I also know that for our main providers here in the valley, Sunshine Transit and Valley Transit, they get additional grant funds from the federal government to provide transit service, commuter service to Anchorage, and then kind of commuter service down from Talkeetna to the Matsu. They get rural transportation or transit funding passed through the state from the federal government, and there is a match for that. And so that match, they're paying 80%. They get the grant for 80% of the funds, and then they have to come up with a cash match of 20%. The Matsu Health Foundation is helping with that right now. So that's what's covering that. So the borough isn't, at this point, involved in supporting transit. So it's complex. There's lots of different funding pots that are coming into play to help folks get rides across the borough.
It seems like these would be good things to identify. Complex and money, money just kind of trickles here, there, and around. It'd be nice for us to know where the money's... You get a better idea, we're not accountants, but just get a better idea when you're asking for us to approve things. I mean, it sounds to me like it's pretty much taxpayer money, whether it's borough taxes or federal taxes or wherever, but the taxpayers are paying for this. It'd be nice to know what percentage of it is actually somebody giving them $5 for a ride, you know what I'm saying? And how much of it is actually taxpayer-funded.
No, I haven't answered that. Okay, I'm in agreement that I believe that it would be really good to see some changes from the previous plan, and also what the cost increases are, or the changes. So I think that, I'm also in agreement of that. I had a very difficult time reading 137-page report to try to decide what was really best for the borough or not. So I think if you could make something a little more concise and a little, give us what was and what is, I think that would be very beneficial to the Planning Commission.
May I speak to the question about changes in this current plan? Like Maya said, that the current plan did update all of our demographics related to how our population in our community is changing. So that also impacts the burden of providers are trying to provide rides for this larger population. So that was a big change. Another change is that the previous plan didn't have strategies associated with the goals that were outlined, and it didn't prioritize the goals in order of importance based on what the providers think the highest priorities are. So this current plan, that is a major change. Now the goals are prioritized from most important to least important, and then there are five to 10 strategies under each goal. So that is one of the major changes with this plan from the previous plan. The other thing that I'll say, and I don't have the acronym of funding, if this plan isn't approved, all of those providers will not be able to access the current federal funding that they currently access right now. So the 300,000 rides that people are receiving over the borough on an annual basis, they wouldn't be able to provide those rides to some of our most needy residents who don't have a car or don't have access to get to essential services. So though the borough doesn't operate transit, and this plan doesn't have funding strings in terms of us implementing this plan, it is dependent on all of those providers being able to continue to provide services to Matsu Senior Services, all the rides they provide to doctors' offices, and taking seniors to grocery shopping or to other essential services. Them and the 15 other health and social services agencies that are providing rides, they wouldn't have the reimbursement funds from the federal government if we don't have this plan in place. Because when they apply for those funds, they have to say that they're working under a coordinated plan. So that's why this plan is so important to move forward.
I understand that to receive the federal funding this plan is required once every five years, it has to be done. What's the deadline on that, five years?
It has to be completed by this year.
This year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we do have a little bit of time.
October 1st is the federal calendar year turnover. So that's why we've been working on it for about a year and a half, and we did a longer public involvement process to give the community more time to let us know that we got it right. But we are in the home stretch of getting it approved because the federal fiscal year turns over on October 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
So I noticed there were 21 different entities that were involved in the discussion on the plan. I don't know who wrote it. I did notice some words in there that might lead me to understand who it might have come from, but I'm curious to know how those 21 entities were selected, or did they volunteer, or how did they come about being included in the group?
So, once we brought the contractor on to help us, because, to back up a little bit, none of the current long-range planning staff were here when the last plan was developed, and none of us are transportation planners. And so we did have a bit of a knowledge deficit when we started this plan. So we did lean heavily on our consultant, who was involved in the coordinated plan from the previous five years. So she did have some experience with our community, and is currently working on another transit project in the Matsu right now, not with us, but with the Health Foundation. So in partnership with our consultant, and Maya, myself, and another planner, Lita Boris, we looked at the previous plan, identified all the different health and social service organizations that were involved in the previous plan. We contacted Anchorage People Mover. We contacted the hospital. We talked to Chickaloon. They run a transit program, and produced a draft list of every provider who might be providing public transit services in the Matsu and in Anchorage, because a lot of our residents are also going to Anchorage for services. And we sent out an initial email. We invited folks to participate in a steering committee. We held, so there was a smaller core of local providers that we met with to workshop the plan. There was a larger group that was on a larger mailing list, that we gave them updates of the plan. We did individual stakeholder interviews, and I don't have that list in front of me, I apologize, reviewing all the goals and strategies and making sure we are capturing all the need and information that they had. And then we did the larger public outreach to, once we got the final draft plan, inviting more comments from the public. So we did our best to circle the wagons and get everyone that might be involved in transit services and invite them to be part of our plan, and that's how we came up with the list.
Commissioner Glenn, is there a federal agency actually in Alaska that represents this transportation?
So the Federal Transit Authority, Region 10, has staff in Washington, but I don't believe they currently have staff that support transit in Alaska. But we have a contact that we communicate with regularly, because there are some other changes to public transit funding in the urban area that you'll hear about in future months when we bring something else forward related to transit. So we do have relationships with FTA, and they're going to do a special site visit in September, and we'll be here to meet with, you know, possibly members of the Planning Commission in the Assembly to talk about changes to transit because of our urbanized area designation.
You know, once again, here we sit, and the federal government's got its tentacles on us, and if we don't do what they tell us to do, they're going to hack our heads off, right? These people are going to lose their funding, and that disturbs me, and I'm tired of it. Everything we do, they've got a hammer over our head, every single thing, and I'm tired of it, frankly. And I would like somebody from that organization to show up and explain to us exactly how that works, how this system is in place, and how they have the authority to say, okay, we're just going to cut off the funds because you guys don't, the borough doesn't agree with this, or the Assembly or the Planning Board doesn't agree with this. This is nonsense.
Any other questions?
I just, real quick, I mean, you come to the last minute. You say this is due on October 1st. You bring it before us. It's almost September 1st, you know? And just like, yeah, I mean, we need to see this sooner so we can help you with it, I guess, or send it back to you. Like, now if we send it back, you don't get funding for the next five years? Is that what I'm hearing?
To be, I'm not sure what would happen if we don't approve a plan.
Well, we might find out, you know? And a lot of people would be without. We should have had this earlier, I think.
Can I?
Yes, you may.
So we did have this before this board at a previous meeting, but we had lack of quorum. So we did have, like, an additional month of time, but because of lack of quorum, it got pushed to this meeting today.
It is still near the very end. Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Okay. Are there any objections? Commissioner Allen, are there any objections?
Okay. Commissioner, Chair, I'm going to object just on the principle that I hate being held over a barrel.
Okay, I'm going to ask the Planning Director a question. If the Commission would like more information, what would be the best process to do this?
So I guess I would ask staff when this is going before the Assembly. I assume it's September 19th? Public hearing would be 26th. So really, if the Planning Commission were to ask for additional information, we could, I believe there's a meeting on the 18th? Is that correct?
That is correct.
So this is going to go to the Assembly September 26th. So, you know, they can receive information from the Planning Commission or the public leading up to the meeting. If you do want to get it to them in their packet, let me see what due date that would be. Very soon. I think it would be due Wednesday of this week. So if you were to, but that's not to say that if a resolution were to be adopted after that time, it still could go to the Assembly. It just would be not necessarily included in the online packet and things like that, but it could go to them in their red folder, which is essentially their handouts.
The resolution that we have for this, can we make an amendment to it?
You absolutely can make an amendment to the resolution that is before you tonight.
That could include, like, the comments that we have and the questions that we have for the Assembly to see in the resolution. They would at least see it that way.
You can include pretty much anything you want in the resolution. It goes to the Assembly. Yes.
Okay. Are there any proposed amendments for this resolution? Thank you. On page 330, or 303, I'm sorry. Of the packet.
So it starts on page 169, right?
The resolution itself is on 303.
If I may, we never did actually, oh, did we open up the public hearing for this? We did. We didn't, okay. Apologize.
We did.
Okay, I'm reading in the resolution at the end where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Matanuskususitna Borough Planning Commission hereby recommends Assembly adoption of this plan." I think that if we put in there something wording in that paragraph that says that we would recommend they receive more... would recommend they receive more information before they do a finalize of the plan. Is that something, I mean, and I'm just discussing this, we're not putting it on the floor yet, something like that, that just says, "We would recommend that the Assembly takes a little more time, gets more information on this before they do a final." It is. But it also would allow the Assembly to understand that we didn't just approve, that we had question on it. Mike, turn your mic on, please.
The worst it is, we're just right up against the wall here, there's hardly any room to work with this, and just, yeah, probably like May would have been a good time to see this, or something, but.
The only thing is, we're stuck with it for five more years.
We're stuck with it for five more years, so, yeah, you're asking, yeah, so, it's a lot of taxpayer dollars there, so.
Does anyone have any other suggestion?
At the same time, we can't just cut these businesses off that are providing the service, so, we're not, I'm not willing to hang them out to dry, but I'm pretty upset about this.
Okay, so the question I have is, is it possible to delay this resolution? Like I said, yes, the public hearing for the Assembly is not until September 26th, so.
I mean, to the end of this meeting.
Oh.
If we can just push this to the end of this meeting, allow everybody to just kind of think about it, and we go on to the other resolutions, and then come back to this at the end.
So, that is a motion to table. So, when you table something, that actually can, you can table it till later in that meeting, so, if you want to do a table, you can do that.
I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 23-20 till later on this meeting.
I second that. Commissioner Skoggins, motion to table Resolution 23-20 at this time, and Commissioner McCabe, second. Okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move ahead to Resolution 23-30. Should I ask? Okay, I apologize. Was there any objection to that motion? Rick, did you object to the motion?
No objection.
Thank you. Again, like I said, please interrupt us if there is.
Will do.
Thanks. Okay, so we will go ahead and move to Resolution 23-30. Resolution of the Matanuska Susitina Borough Planning Commission recommending the Matanuska Susitina Borough Assembly approval of the Matanuska Susitina Borough's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. Staff Kelsey Anderson, Planner 3.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kelsey Anderson with the Planning Services Division, here to talk about the Borough's first-ever bicycle and pedestrian plan. So, back in 2017, the Borough Assembly adopted what's called a Long Range Transportation Plan. And within that plan, it offers goals, objectives, strategies, and actually an implementation list of infrastructure projects to increase mobility, to provide a safer transportation network. And within that plan, it specifically called for a separate chapter completely dedicated to non-motorized transportation, understanding that it needed the ability to go much more in-depth than the Long Range Transportation Plan was able to do. Because that is really, the LRTP is what we use for our car-centric mobility planning. So, because the Long Range Transportation Plan called for a non-motorized plan, two years ago, we went through the RFP process, brought on a consultant to help us with this, and started developing the Borough's first plan. So, we used Respect, they have a office here in Palmer, and then also up in Fairbanks, and they've been helping us with a lot of our transportation planning needs throughout the last five to 10 years. So they had a really good understanding of what our struggles and challenges and opportunities were, kind of straight off the bat, which was really nice. So we broke the plan up into, or the planning process up into three different phases. The first was really just looking at existing conditions and coming up with some initial The Borough has done a lot of work already with transportation planning, so we weren't trying to reinvent the wheel by any means, but we did have consultants pour over our community comprehensive plans to see what, you know, specific communities like Meadow Lakes, and Fishhook, and Talkeetna had in mind for their transportation network. We also looked at the Borough's own master trails plan, obviously the Long Range Transportation Plan, old bond packages, transportation bond packages, things like that. So just looking at what are the infrastructure needs that people have already identified, and then also looking at what currently exists as far as separated pathways, bike lanes, widened shoulders, sidewalks, things like that. And then we were also looking into the policies and the programs that the Borough currently has, as far as what do we recommend developers do when they're developing subdivisions next to schools and things like that, they're trying to figure out how to get kids to school safely. So, oh, and we also did an economic impact analysis, understanding that there is definitely a monetary value to having more bike trails and more recreation opportunities. So that's an appendices to the plan, but it is a full report showing just how much the Borough has to offer currently, as far as recreational tourism opportunities go, but also what could be possible if we actually invested more into the infrastructure. So, also during that initial phase, we did a little bit of public outreach, we mostly saved that for Phase 2, but we did have an online comment map, where people were able to drop a pin on a place, and a comment box popped up, and they would tell us, "Oh, I love, you know, biking in this area," or "I walk with my kids in this area all the time," or "I live in Outer Springer, and I'm terrified to take my kids in a stroller along that road." So we got lots of good comments, lots of bad comments, but really what we were looking for was the lived experience, what's it like for people, Borough residents who are on these pathways and streets, what's it like for them? So we got a lot of fantastic feedback straight off the bat. So, through that existing conditions report and all of that, we were able to come up with a list of recommendations as far as actual infrastructure projects go, so I kind of took that and did a roadshow. I did 25 separate meetings with different stakeholder groups, community councils, things like that, did an update with the Planning Commission, did an update with the Assembly, did three radio interviews, had stuff all over Facebook, we had a website that people could comment on throughout the entire process. And we got a ton of really great engagement and feedback, and so, once that Phase 2 kind of came to a natural end, we switched into Phase 3, which was really developing the final plan that you see before you, incorporating that public feedback into our final recommendations, which turned into our implementation plan. So, one thing that you're going to start seeing a little bit differently with the plans that we're producing is implementation plans, like, attached to them. For a Bike and Ped Plan, that makes sense, that it's a list of infrastructure projects that talks about short-term, or near, mid, and long-term projects that the Borough can actually check the box, put it into a transportation bond package, and construct, and then have that be done. So, we did that, we created this final plan, and then went through our, like, formal public comment period, right? Like, every plan has to go through that. And we received a bunch of feedback, so we received 72 comments, which, for a planning document, makes our planner hearts sore, because we don't usually get that kind of engagement, but with something like Bike and Pedestrian Planning, people were really engaged, and they were excited to talk about it. We actually ended up adding 30 new projects to the list of our implementation plan for the Bike and Ped, just solely based on the public comments. So a lot of the stuff that people were telling us, as I mentioned, like, is that lived experience, right? Like, I only live in Palmer, and I bike in Palmer, and so that's the lens that I have, but this is a Borough-wide plan, so we got a lot of feedback from folks in Willow, and Talkeetna, and Sutton, and just really all over the Borough, asking us, like, yes, we absolutely want a more connected network, and we're excited that you're doing this project. So I was really happy to hear that there was really just overwhelming support from the community on this project. One thing I did want to point out to you is that I added something to your resolution that I have, I don't, I haven't normally added before. I actually got the idea from the Wassila Seds, I don't know if you guys are familiar with their Community Economic Development Strategy Plan, but I was reading over the legislation for their city council, and I saw that Crystal had added in a piece about further recommending that their city council dedicate funds and resources to the implementation of the Seds. And that really is, like, the missing link, the piece that the Borough hasn't always had with the plans that we bring forward to the Planning Commission and the Assembly. So I just wanted to point that out, and say that the Borough is already dedicating a lot of, well, not a lot, but the Borough is already dedicating funds and resources. Just to point out, the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP 21, the bond package that the voters passed in 2021, had 14 separated pathways in it. And then the recommended projects for TIP 23 include two separated pathways, but they also include recommendations for widening shoulders, things like that. So we're already seeing that it's a priority with our public and leadership through the Transportation Improvement Program, so that's a really great step forward to listening to our public, and just kind of really listening to the vision that they want to see in their Borough. So, that is, I think, all that I have for you right now, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions?
Commissioner Glenn, in regard to the bike path, so, as long as we know that the one size does not fit all on these bike paths, because we've been building them in the middle of nowhere, and, you know, there's a new bike path going in, getting ready to go in right down the edge of the airport out here, it's a great thing, kids are in the road all the time, that road's narrow, and it gets used. I mean, there's a ton of people on it. And I don't, I, what I don't want to see is a bunch of bike paths in the middle of nowhere that aren't getting used, and I'll tell you what, we've got a bike path out at the Butte, and the hardcore bikers ride down the road, they do not ride on the bike path. The, it's the family people that are on the bike path. The other ones are out with this much guardrail and six inches of fog line, riding with their back to traffic, and it's just insane, really, and jamming up traffic, and it's aggravating. And I don't want to see any more of that either, so, I don't know if there's a way to regulate that in this process. If there's an adjacent bike path, they have to ride on it, or not, but it's a, it's a concern, so.
So, through the Chair, to Commissioner Glenn, that's a really valid point. We also heard a lot about law enforcement with ATVs versus non-motorized, and how do we, if we build bike paths, how do we make sure that ATV users aren't on those, but also that we're not taking away the space that ATV users currently use for the bike path, right? So there's definitely this, like, we want to make sure that all of the users are being able to recreate the way that they want to recreate. And that's going to take just work between DOT, the Borough, and then also, the Borough doesn't have police powers, so we can't actually regulate anything when it comes to bikers on, on the roads, right? So what we can do is offer a separated pathway for them, when it's along arterial road, that's like 45 miles per hour and up, but what you will see in the Bike and Ped Plan is not just every single new road that's built in the Borough gets a bike path, like, that's not it. There's big differences between biking along Bogard, and biking, I'm coming up with a blank, but like, biking in subdivision in Talkeetna. So the differences are, are real, and so our solutions are not, like, one-size-fits-all for the bike plan.
Commissioner Glenn, again, how many, do you know how many miles of bike path that the Borough currently owns? And what is the bike path going to the Butte, is that DOT or Borough? Who owns that?
DOT.
DOT owns that?
Yes.
So how many, how many miles of bike path do we, does the Matu Borough own?
That is such a good question, that a prepared planner would have the answer for. I do want to check in the plan, I feel like we did add that, so I brought it up here. It's over 100, but it's less than 200. I want to say it's about 135 miles of Borough-maintained separated pathways.
So if it's beside a DOT road, if it's on DOT, is the easement DOT, or what, that these bike paths are on? And then we have, the Borough has a bike path on a DOT easement, or how is this working, exactly?
So, I can, I can answer as best as I can, and then I'll turn to my director. So, the, we have a hodgepodge of roads and road ownership, pathways and pathway ownership. A good example actually is the Butte Pathway, or the Old Glen Pathway, because there's another phase going in that the Borough actually put into its TIP 21 bond package, but then once it is constructed, DOT will take ownership of the maintenance of it. So there's a lot of maintenance agreements happening between the cities, the Borough, and DOT, all depending on who's got money to fund what, and then, but normally, it's whoever owns the road is going to be maintaining the pathway, that's kind of the general rule. But sometimes who pays for it, and who, like, how that works out, just happens, like, with who's got the money to do it.
I got a question for you.
Go ahead.
I got, so, on the pathways, they don't, do they, they don't typically, do they plow them or not? Is it?
That's a great question.
Because you're talking about non-motorized user, I'm just curious, because some people want to ski, but then they really don't want you plowing them, but then you got kids, like, that want to walk to school, I just, I, there's no right or wrong answer, I'm just curious.
No, totally, that's a great question, so, it depends on where you're at. So in the cities of Palmer and Wassila, they do make sure to maintain their sidewalks during the wintertime, because kids are walking to school on those sidewalks. DOT will plow their, their pathways, but it's going to be like third or fourth down on the, on the hierarchy of when it happens. So, we don't really have a comprehensive, if there are, if there's one or two inches of snow, then that sidewalk gets paved right away, like, we don't have that. That's actually one of the recommended policies in the plan itself, so we broke down our recommendations into policies, infrastructure, and programs. One of the policies that we recommend is coming up with some sort of maintenance outline that can kind of give residents a reasonable expectation of when these pathways can be maintained. But it's difficult, because finding funding to even just build them is difficult, so maintaining them is an entirely different thing, too. So, we have to figure that into our costs of building and maintaining, and that's all part of the design process.
I have a question. Is the money requirement within the Borough for funding of transportation projects for roads, does it have a set amount that you have to incorporate into paths or bike trails?
Thank you.
Like the federal money does?
So, it currently does not, no. There is, we can have a bond package with no pathways, we can have a bond package that is all pathways, there's nothing set. We do recommend in here to incorporate, like, a 20%. We do recommend in here to incorporate like a twenty percent standard, to just say, when we're creating transportation bond packages, recognizing that not all of our residents want just roads, that they also would like to see pathways and widen shoulders, things like that, to try and put a percentage on it so that we can see if there's projects to be done, which, like, like I said, there's over, there's over one hundred recommended projects, and that's based on the public feedback that we got. So trying to make sure that they remain a priority, but understanding that they aren't the priority, right? We still are, and will always be a very car-centric place, and there's nothing wrong with that. But not everybody in the borough wants to have to drive their car, and they don't want to have to drive to recreation areas. So giving them that opportunity to kind of have their vote with their tax dollars is also important.
Any other questions?
We're so upscale out at the Butte that they plow ours all winter, so.
I did have a question.
Sure.
So I'd like, I really liked how you pointed out the near term, the midterms and the long terms. Do you have a cost breakdown between those? Because I appreciate a lot of the near terms for the schools, which I think are a big deal and necessary to have safe walkways, bike paths to get to schools, but do you have a breakdown in cost on those?
So we don't include a breakdown of cost in the bike and ped plan. It's really meant to just identify the need and identify the responsible agency and potential partnerships with, like, between cities or other things like that, like we saw with the TIP-21, where we came in with a specific number for a bond package, and then you go to design and construction, and all of a sudden, you're however many millions of dollars out, because that's how quickly it can change from knowing that you have a problem that you're going to solve with constructing, you know, certain facility, to designing it and then constructing it. So it wasn't really within the scope of the bike and ped plan to lay out the funding. That comes with incorporating it into the bond packages, going through the full design, because really don't know what it's going to look like until you look at all the environmental factors and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
So no, even the estimate?
No. No, we didn't do any estimates, because also, it's supposed to be a document that's going to live for a while, right? And so.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so then my last question, because I do like to check money.
Yeah.
My last question, you had mentioned the bonds. Do you, would, do you foresee if this plan goes forward, that you would be asking for a bond to be put in place for this plan to be implemented? I mean, what would the plan be, would you be looking for a bond to do that?
So, that's a great question. So our leadership at the borough right now is looking to have a transportation bond package going forward every couple of years, understanding that we really need to be planning for infrastructure right now with so many people coming to the valley. They would use this plan as kind of the, well, we want to incorporate bike paths, or we want to incorporate safe routes to school, which ones are a priority, and grab from there. So I do not expect that there would be a bicycle and pedestrian plan bond package, although that would be pretty cool, but, but I don't foresee that happening, but I do see it as like they're already including pathways and shoulders, like I said, into bond packages. So I imagine that we would see that continue to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other, any other questions?
Yeah. We should be able to come up with a pretty easy mile, mileage cost analysis on a bike path. Pretty dang easy, I would think, so. I mean, how much does it cost to build a mile of bike path? Taxpayers want to know.
Way more than you want to know.
Yeah. Do you know the answer to that?
So this is Alex Strong, planning director. So it's going to be highly variable, depending on how much right-of-way you need to take. You can, you can calculate how much it costs for concrete, but, but if you have to expand the right-of-way, that's where the real cost comes in.
So the, the borough's then going to have to buy more right-of-way, possibly? Is that correct?
So.
Or do we already have it? Are these roads wide enough to do this on?
So it depends. Like, on TIP-21, the transportation, the, the package there, there is a bike path that was put on there to go down North Forty-Ninth State Street to get to Colony School. We didn't know which side of the road it was going to be on, so we had to do a study to figure out, okay, where could we actually put a bike path and where could it go? I don't know if that required any right-of-way acquisition or not, but, you know, that, that's, these are, there's a lot of variables. It's not just the price of concrete.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other, another question?
I just wanted to know what these are, the Vision Zero program?
Vision Zero is a program that local governments can adopt, and it's basically committing to getting to zero fatalities, zero pedestrian and bike fatalities. And so a Vision Zero program really just lays out the commitment that a local government can take to get to zero fatalities with bicyclists and pedestrians. And then there's like steps that you can implement that are supposed to help that. But honestly, implementing a bicycle and pedestrian plan is really going to help, because what we see is that when there is a crash or a connection between a vehicle and a pedestrian or a cyclist, thirty-three percent of the time, that results in fatality. And so we, we actually have quite a few hotspots in the borough, unfortunately, that, yeah, that a lot of borough residents have lost their lives because of that. So that's what Vision Zero is about. It's about getting to zero fatalities.
Thank you. And the other one, I wanted to know what this means, Green Belt Pathway Reconnaissance and Engineering Study.
Yeah. Gosh. Do, well, I mean, you look excited to talk about it, so you should take it. Tag.
Yeah. So these, these reconnaissance studies are, a good example would be that North Forty-Ninth State Street, where we are trying to get a high-level cost estimate for, for a new bike path, or maybe a new road or whatever. And so we'll hire an engineering firm to go out and look at it and give a, a good idea of how much that's actually going to cost, and then where it would be located, whether it's on the west side of the road or the east side of the road, and, and maybe even give options.
So, yeah, so to add on to that, the green belt portion of that is just thinking about where could a path exist for walking and biking, rolling and strolling, however you want to do it, one-wheeling? Is there a space in the borough, probably primarily in the core area, where it can just be like a green, so you're not biking along KGB, or you're not biking along the Palmer-Wassila highway, but is there an area in the borough where it makes sense to invest in something like a green space pathway? The thing that comes to mind is, I don't know if any of you have been on the Chester Creek Trail in Anchorage, where you can essentially walk or bike from the east side of town to the west side of town, and except for a couple of intersections, like, you really are along a creek, you're in the trees, you're away from the sounds of traffic. The borough doesn't really have anything that's used like that here. So that's just one idea in the programs that we have to think about what that might look like.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on Resolution Two Three Dash Three Zero. Please state your full name and spell your last name for the record. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star three. Is there anyone on the phone? Okay. And since there's no one in the audience, I could say we probably don't have anyone in the audience to speak. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? No objection, public hearing is closed. Mr. Strong, do you have any comments that you would like to make? Nope, I'm sorry, it wouldn't be you, would it?
No, I, I don't, other than, I guess, I, I will say that I'm a person who either walks, rides his bike, or takes a one-wheel to work every single day, and so I'm very personally, you know, there's, there's actually a couple spots where I wish there would be improvements, and, and I think this plan, you know, identifies the gaps in our, in our network and will improve the overall safety of the borough residents, so.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion for Resolution Two Three Dash Three Zero.
I make a motion for Resolution Two Three Dash Three Zero.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Glenn made the motion for Resolution Two Three Dash Three Zero, and it was seconded by Commissioner McCabe. Is there any discussion? Are there any objections? Commissioner Allen, are there any objections?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If there are no objections, then the plan passes. Now we will go back to Resolution Two Three Dash Two Zero. Would anyone be interested in taking a five-minute break? Okay, let's, let's actually go to ten after eight. We'll take a break. Okay, we are back at Resolution 23-20. I'll go ahead and read the title on it. Resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly adoption of the 2023 Coordinated Human Services Transportation Plan update with staff Mia DeSalvo and Planner 2. Okay. The motion's already on the floor, so is there any motions for an amendment?
While I move, we amend Resolution 23-04.
Okay.
Yes, I make recommendations to provide the specific changes to the transportation plan, for starters, and advice or help from others, we greatly appreciate it. Thoughts?
What are the specific plans or changes that we would be looking for? Okay. Like, information from what the previous plan had? A comparison between the previous plan and the new plan? And maybe cost changes between the old plan and the new plan?
It's always important to know where the funding's coming from and have a good idea of what percentages are coming from where and the overall estimated cost of these projects.
Go ahead. To that point, I don't think the borough is the one doing the funding. It's the independent group, so there's no way to assess what the cost is. In the end, it costs all of us because it's taxpayer money, no matter which way you look at it. So is the cost-benefit analysis in line with how many people are being served by the dollars that it costs? How many users actually use the transportation system? And what do those, each of those individual users, cost? Would you like that in the amendment?
Can I ask a question here of Alex? Commissioner Glenn here. Is, are the people providing the transportation audited? Surely they're audited. Do we know that? Is the feds auditing them? Is the state auditing them, or?
I don't know if they have regular audits, but, you know, I do know that any time the federal government hands out money in a grant, they're going to have certain expectations. And usually auditing is a part of that, and usually having some updated plan is a part of that as well.
So we should be able to come up with a number?
A number-
A hard number.
Of ridership?
On ridership, on how much this is costing out of pocket for people, how much the taxpayers are paying, et cetera.
I think we do know the total amount of federal dollars that pour into this community for transit. Is that correct? No, we don't. Can we?
Yes, go ahead.
Kim Solian, Planning Services Manager. So the accounting of the different organizations that are providing public transit is not part of the scope of this plan. We did survey the main providers that are providing ridership, and I think the total number, which is in the full plan, was about 300,000 rides a year, spread across Valley Transit, Chickaloon Transit, Sunshine Transit, Matsu Senior Services, and the 15 different health and human service organizations that are providing rides, and the taxi cab companies that are providing rides. But in terms of their fee structure, how it's being paid for, that isn't part of the scope of this plan, so I couldn't speak to that. We didn't, we did ask about ridership because we wanted to see the change from the 2018 plan till now, but we didn't, understanding the finances of the organizations that are providing the service is beyond the scope of this plan.
This doesn't seem like it should be this complicated. It's all dollars and people and mileage, you know, so.
So, if I may, I did put down what I think you're asking for here. If you could look at the screen, I'll read it in for the record. And if you, you know, this is at least a starting point. If you want to modify it, please feel free, but I put it as, be it further resolved, the commission recommends the assembly request a summary of changes that were made with this update and request an analysis of overall cost to taxpayers.
We just don't really know how much the transit system gets from the federal government. Like, last year, we don't really know that number, or have a ballpark. Is it like 100,000, or is it like 10 million? Somehow, we should know that, I think.
Kim Solian, Planning Services Manager. So why I'm struggling is because transit is complex, and so we do have some rough numbers on what Valley Transit and Sunshine Transit are receiving in federal grants on an annual basis to do their traditional commuter transit and their call and response, or scheduled ride service. But this particular plan is really focused on the riders that are trying to get to essential services, to the doctor's office, to the grocery store, some, to employment, to, you know, to the VA, places like that. And so it's a much, it's a broader network of providers, and so it's not just a one lump sum grant that they're receiving. They are receiving, and they don't have the number of the federal grant, they're getting some baseline operations funds, but I don't, each of them apply for their own individual grant, and the grants are on an annual basis, and like, that's not part of the investigation that we did. They're also, like I said before, probably getting cash pay. They're also probably getting Medicaid and Medicare billing to cover some of those services. I know Matsu Regional is also providing some of the rides that are, that are helping these individuals get back from surgery and other appointments. So it's not as simple as one grant that they're all getting. They are, their fee structure is complicated, and their funding structure is complex. And I apologize, I don't have that answer.
Commissioner Glenn, I got another question for you. So everything that needs to happen here works on checks and balances. We need to make sure that the senior citizens or the senior transport people, I'm just pointing them out, are hauling the number of people they're saying in order to keep this thing legal and nobody cheating the system, because it happens. And we need to know how much money is going where and to who, and to make sure that people are actually riding the bus and paying. You know what I'm saying? Because this could, they could be hauling people that aren't getting on the bus and charging. There's a, they're, seriously, this happens. So how are we, what's the checks and balances? And the borough is putting their head on the chopping block over this thing, really. I mean, we're saying that these people are hauling this many people. Are they really hauling that many people? This is a taxpayer's money getting spent here, so it's a little concerning.
If I may, I mean, I think that is beyond the scope of this project. This is, what we're doing is updating this plan so that the different providers can be eligible for federal funds. The question of auditing and enforcement and, you know, ensuring there's no fraud and things like that is up to the federal government, and, you know, that's between them and the people who are applying for the grants. Anytime somebody is applying for a federal grant, there is the possibility there's going to be fraud, but it's not the borough that gets involved in that.
I guess what I'm hearing is, yes, vote, as is, opens up all this federal money to all these, these 15 or so, however many different entities. We just have no idea how much money that is, taxpayer money that that is. We're just, we're just going to open that gate up, is what we're, the vote is for, basically, today. And that's, that's a tough one for us, right? I mean, we have responsibilities, too. So we are all taxpayers. And I, none of us want to see the funding not available for these people. And I don't know that it is your job to provide us with these numbers, but I don't know whose it is. I guess I'm trying to understand your, where you're coming from with Alex's help a little bit better, too. And I'm, I feel like we're really attacking you, but it's not maybe in your scope. It's not, apparently not in your scope of work. You're just recommending this plan. But it's just unfortunate that you're asking us something that, you know, costs a lot of money. And you, I think you've done everything you're supposed to do. So, but don't.
Commissioner Glenn here, one more time, and we're not mad at you, so don't think that. So there's, if we're signing off on this thing, that means that we are accountable for this money that's going to these entities that we want to be successful. We want them to get their jobs done. We want them to provide services. There's not one person sitting here that does not want that. Make sure somebody gets to their doctor appointment or whatever. So, but I mean, if we don't sign off on it, they don't get their money, so we are accountable. So, and it's taxpayers' money. Period.
Can I address that? I mean, maybe, maybe the attorney can chime in, but I think that we are at very low, our liability here, if we adopt this plan, is fairly low. If, like, really low. We, you know, so I don't think that we're at risk if there's fraud that we would somehow be wrapped up into it. We're just updating the plan so that they're eligible, and they have all these individual grants where there's liability associated with that, but not necessarily the borough.
I can't-
This is Commissioner Allen. I may have misunderstood him, but I, I don't think Commissioner Glenn was speaking, like, literally that we would be legally liable. I think he was speaking in more of a moral sense, that if we, you know, sign off on this, are we, you know, offering a blank check or endorsing a blank check, basically?
Okay, I apologize. I misunderstood.
I guess I got to ask the question. Did, did, did we not really just pass the bike plan in a similar way? And just, we don't, we didn't, we're not asking, you know, it, we're not trying to find out where the funding's coming from there. I don't think there's a, there's a difference, but not a huge difference, in a sense, to these two. So, I mean, Kelsey brought something forward to us. We passed it, we moved on, but we didn't ask her to break down each one of her projects, and it still has, it still has to meet approval. I think your group of people still have to get, have to be approved, vendors, if you will. I don't know if that's the correct term, but they're not just getting the money. I can't pull up in a cab and start my own business there. So, but yeah, but still, back to the money thing, it's taxpayer money, so we always got to think about that.
I think the difference between the bike plan and this one is the bike plan is hard projects that will have to go through the assembly and through the, this one's not. This is a, we have a plan that's going to allow other people to receive grants because we have a plan. Is that correct? Alex, or somebody?
Yeah, Kim Solian, Planning Services Manager. I will say that, yes, this plan is a coordination plan to ensure that all of the providers in our community are working together and communicating to make sure that we're caring for the transportation needs of our most disadvantaged community members. So, yeah, it is a plan that allows them to access funding, but the point is to make sure that we're, you know, coordinating communication as a local community, and they're all working together and supporting each other, and that the federal government doesn't want to give everybody the same grant and duplicate services. They want to make sure that we're all working together and being strategic about how we're meeting that need. So it is a plan to support funding, but it, yeah, it's about local control and coordination.
I guess this isn't a question. This is just a statement. With our national debt sitting at, what is it, 33 or more trillion dollars, and all the money being handed out for who knows what, I just have a really hard time with my conscience just giving a blank check kind of a vote to something. So I'm sorry, but I just have a heartburn over it. Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. Do we have a resolution amendment? I know we're having some computer difficulties right now. Okay.
So if I could just give an update here, this is not the first time this has happened. We occasionally, at the borough, get a message that your computer will shut down in 15 minutes, whether you like or not. And we just got that, and Caleb is working towards stopping that, that imminent event.
I think we're going to be delayed a minute.
It just would shut down the computer that- The display, yeah.
Great job. Congratulations, Caleb. Excellent. Okay, so the proposed amendment is on the screen.
And, Madam Chair, I did, while we were talking, I did add a couple of words, so if I could reread this into the record.
Yes, please.
It now states, be it further resolved, the commission recommends the assembly request a summary of changes that were made with this update and request an analysis of overall cost that the existing transit system has to taxpayers.
I would probably insert, request a summary of changes that were made from the prior plan, or whatever the abbreviation is for it, with this update.
So I think that's what the first part, if I understand you correctly, so the commission recommends the assembly request a summary of changes that were made with this update. So, yeah, that's, that's the idea, yeah. And if I, if, if somebody is- So I think it's-
My request.
Request, yeah. And so I can't make motion, so if somebody likes this, if you could make a motion to adopt this change?
I'll make a motion to adopt, what am I adopting here? The change, the, what change is it? The overall cost?
Be it further resolved.
Be it further resolved, the commission recommends the assembly request a summary of changes that were made with this proposed update, request an analysis of overall costs that the existing transit system has to taxpayers. Do you want to add something to that, or?
So you make the motion to accept that change?
I make the motion to accept that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn made the motion to adopt the change that's written on the screen, that was read into the record earlier, and seconded by Commissioner McCabe. Okay. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Allen, did you see what the change was?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Are there any objections? Okay, there's no objections, then the change, the amendment is approved. Okay.
Now we have to vote on the whole thing.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the whole plan? Are there any objections on the plan, the overall plan? Commissioner Allen, any discussion or objections on the overall plan?
I would just say that I agree with many of the sentiments of many of my colleagues, that it would have been great to have a little more time to digest this, but overall, I don't find it objectionable, and I think it's very important that these agencies within our borough that provide these essential services get the funding that they need. I do agree that more transparency would be great, and a little more time, as I said, to lick this stuff over would have been great, but, you know, I, I'm somebody who rode Valley Transit to Anchorage for over six years. I know of disabled vets who use it to get to the VA. It's very, very important services that are being provided, so I don't want to jeopardize that funding, so I'm going to be a yes vote.
Okay, thank you. Are there any objections to the overall plan? Okay, hearing and seeing none, the plan, the resolution passes. Okay. All right, we're on correspondence and information, there's none, unfinished business, there's none, new business, there's none, commission business. Mr. Strom?
Yeah, so I'm just going to give the same spiel that I always give on this one, for your convenience, at the, in your packet is the upcoming agenda items that are going to be coming your way. A lot of them are quasi judicial, some are legislative. Please refrain from discussing the quasi judicial items, and if, if I can take this time to roll into the director comments-
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. First of all, I will say that we, we are going to put on the, we, we have a vacant seat for the school site selection committee, the planning commission has a seat on there, and, and it's not filled right now, so we are going to put on a later agenda item under, I think probably commission business, that will nominate and vote on a person to represent the planning commission at the school site selection committee. We don't have any new schools that are coming in the near future, but at some point we may, and so that's going to be an important role if that is the case. Also, at the assembly's last meeting, the, they established a water body setback advisory board, and that does include somebody from the planning commission as well. So it is, the deadline for that is September 1st to have the, all the, the application process for that, so unfortunately, we were able to advertise that that would be on the agenda tonight, so if you are on the planning commission and you'd like to be on the water body setback advisory board, please apply with the clerk's office, you can do it online as well. That's going to be, I think, a very interesting project, it's going to be an interesting group with a lot of knowledge and diverse opinions, and, and we're going to try to tackle this problem, and, and so please, please, uh, please apply if you're interested. And then I guess I will also say, if, if you're dealing with legislative matter and you have questions, I would really urge you to contact staff well in advance of the meeting so that we can get you all the information that you're looking for. You know, it's different, if it's quasi judicial, you really need to email the clerk with the questions, but if it is legislative, I encourage you to contact me, I will get you to the person who's handling the project, and you'll be able to ask all the questions you want to your heart content, and we'll have time to give you good, well-prepared answers and provide you the information you're looking for.
Okay. So other commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Allen.
No other comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glenn?
Well, no comments, I appreciate all of you, everybody in the back row over there, and thank you for being here, and I know you're here late, and you're getting up early to go to work tomorrow, so anyway, appreciate all your efforts, so this, none of it's easy, and we got to answer to the taxpayers, and that's the bottom line, and they, all they care about's money, so that's pretty much it, thank you very much.
Commissioner McCabe?
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Skoggins?
I'm going to mirror a little bit of Doug, I, I thank you guys, and honestly, if we all just sit here and go yep, 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 we all agreed on everything, it would, we wouldn't be getting anything done. We gotta, it's kind of sharing everybody's ideas and opinions, and that's pretty important, and making compromise, working together, but I sure, the worst thing we'd do is everybody agree, and, and it's better off we have some good discussions sometimes, and thank you for your time.
And I agree with that, I appreciate everybody here, I appreciate all the plans that you guys put together and, and the information. Sometimes it's a little more in depth in lots of, lots of, to me, it almost seems like there's a lot of fluff and not a lot of bring it down to the nuts and bolts, keep it to the nuts and bolts and keep it easy for us, and we will get right through it. That's something that all of us have, other things that we do, other lives, and this is an additional thing, so it's difficult to go through the multiple page plan, so we appreciate that you guys will consider that. Other than that, I think that's it, so we will go ahead and we will adjourn. This meeting is adjourned at 8:38.